He's active.
Oh, it's great, yeah.
On air.
On air right now.
He answers pretty well.
Is that good?
No, I don't think so.
Actually, yeah, isn't the average like seventy-two?
I haven't been there.
I'm sorry?
Average seventy-two.
Yeah. So it's reflecting. Yes. I would be all for that.
Floor on our back. And it doesn't appear to this app.
What can we turn on?
Yeah. We have a few people arriving, so we'll wait. Welcome all to the April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four zoning board appeals meeting for the Pauling Village. We open up with a roll call, Vivian.
Tom Zarecki.
Present.
Ann Hardman.
Here.
Fred DeVito is not here. And Nicholas Worley.
Here. And you all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We have one item on our agenda to this evening, four fifteen Memorial Avenue. Dave Daniels is here, the property owner. Dave, would you like to talk to the board and everyone here tonight about what you have going on there? Or your represent-
This is my architect, Mary Langit.
Hi, Mary Langit, I'm Nicholas, nice to meet you.
I will just.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will give you overview of the project. I'm Mary Langit, principal at O'Neil Langit Architects. The proposal is for fifteen Memorial Avenue. It's located one lot in from the corner of Memorial Avenue and Smith Street, just up the street here.
Just couple of doors down.
Yes. It is in the B-one zone, and we are, our proposal is to convert the eighteen ninety-eight building, which was constructed as a single-family residence, into a hotel. Part of the project will develop the interior of the building. We will not be adding on to the building whatsoever. We will renovate the historic property. We are preserving a lot of the remaining historical pieces of the building, like beautiful plaster moldings, you know, large-scale wooden doors. There's one remaining fireplace in the building. We will be renovating the three existing bathrooms in the building and then adding another bathroom. I will take you into the interior as we go through, but I can explain that we will be restoring the existing building. We will be painting it. We will maintain the existing shutters that are on the building, and we will be removing them on the sides of the building, but keeping them on the front of the building. It has an existing covered porch with stairs down, and then it goes down to a slate walkway with stairs again going down onto Memorial Avenue. The existing stairs here are not currently code compliant. We will bring those up to code, we will replace all the railings. And then the existing stair up to the deck porch is in disrepair, so we will fix that and also paint that porch and, you know, upgrade the lighting there. We will be proposing in the, in the front yard, new plantings, new, new fence, very similar to the one at the station inn, and a new sign with a lamppost on it. We will also be putting the same sign at this rear area here, and I'll show you photos of that. Currently, you access the current parking area, the pay parking area, for fifteen Memorial through nineteen Memorial. So there's an existing drive aisle here, and we are proposing six parking spaces here. One will be ADA compliant. We only need four as a break for hotel use for under twenty-five rooms required for four parking spaces. We will also develop the rear yard for the, yes, the enjoyment of the guests. It, the, the idea is to, you know, put some plantings there, some flower beds, some Adirondack chairs, and maybe some fire pits. There's an existing large evergreen tree that we will maintain there, and a large tree at the rear of the property here. There's an existing shed on the property which we will remove. So that's the exterior. We show here the signage with the light, the lamppost. The name of the hotel is not finalized yet, but it will be something in keeping with Station Inn, and the signage will be of the same aesthetic as the Station Inn sign. The lampposts which we will add at the rear yard, I'll show you where that is, will be very traditional and in keeping with what you see in Pauling. And then the, well, you have arbor by ity, very fast-growing shrubs, and boxwoods to kind of screen from the neighbors. This is showing the, the type of signage we will use for the reserved ADA compliant parking space, and then there will be a ramp entrance to the rear of the building, and that will take you into the suites, and I will show you that ADA route as we get into that. This is showing that front walk here with the new fence, painted wooden fence, very similar to Station Inn. The idea for the hotel is that it will have suite-style rooms. So the current design is such that guests can either enter through the front. There's a main, very traditional hallway with a beautiful old stair here. We will open it up and create a through hallway here. You will be able to enter via the ramp and through this rear lounge area, and then through this hallway here. This was an existing kitchen for the residential use. We are removing, there's no cooking in this hotel. There's only beverage stations in, in the rooms for water, tea. We are removing the range that exists here and the large four-mat refrigerator. So there's no cooking on site at all. This will serve as more of a pantry. So you can move through the space here, and this is the accessible route into the ADA suite here, which is Suite A. The main room in Suite A can serve two occupants. The secondary room can serve two occupants, and we will retrofit this bathroom here to become ADA compliant as a rolling shower. The other room on this floor will be here. This is an existing large room. We will provide a new entrance to it here, and then we will construct a new bathroom for that room. On the second floor, there's two staircases existing in the house, so you can come up this way or you can come up this way. You come up to the second floor, you will land here, and you will be able to enter this suite here. And it has a room here that can house two occupants, and a room here that can house two occupants. And then this is an existing bathroom which we will also renovate. You can come up either stair here. This room here, we will renovate. This is an existing room that can take one occupant, and then this is an existing bathroom which we will also renovate. I should add that the reason for these suite-style rooms is that the current Station Inn, it primarily has single rooms, you know, for couples. And there's been a need for couples with families, you know, more than two-person households renting one of the rooms. So that's why we decided to develop that as a suite-style room. The renovation will be very much historic in nature. The decor, the aesthetics of the rooms will be very much to talk about the history of Pauling and the history of the house. The idea for this inn is also that guests will come. They will be, you know, primarily coming here for McKinney and Doyle, for Daryl's house, for hiking. They will, you know, use the shops and the, all that Pauling has to offer. So it's an idea more of an upscale type of inn, and that the type of guests that will be here will be here for quiet enjoyment and really know about Paul, to know about Pauling. So we are seeking a variance. We are required to have a twelve-foot drive aisle into our space and into our parking area here. We have the twelve feet here. This is twenty-one point four feet at the pinch point here. But we, there's a stone wall that is eighteen inches thick, and at that point, we only have nine point eight nine feet. So for, we're seeking the less two-foot-one for this area right here, okay? So that's our first variance. I can show you, and this is on your handouts, probably easier to see, but this is the entry from Smith Street here. So this is nineteen Memorial here. I'm sorry, nineteen Memorial is here. And then this is, as you're coming from Smith Street, you're approaching fifteen here, okay? This is looking the other way. So this is as you're entering from Smith Street. You're looking at nineteen here, and you're looking at fifteen here. You can also see the stone wall in a distance here, and that stone wall kind of traveled around the border of fifteen, of nineteen Memorial. And there are, there's currently parking here that's parallel parking against this wall. But you have the nine foot required for parallel, and then you also have a twelve foot for the drive aisle here. This photo three is as you're standing on Smith Street looking in. So you can see, again, nineteen here, fifteen in the back. Photo four is showing the stone wall, one side of the stone wall, and then there's an existing speed bump, and these are both on the nineteen Memorial property. And then there is a drainage, a drain, a linear drain here that was constructed on fifteen Memorial. Again, you can see that here. You can see on photo five, you can see the two edges of the eighteen-inch-thick wall that we're talking about for that variance. Variance two that we're seeking, so there is a provision in the Pauling code for housing, and it was adopted to prevent overcrowding in dwelling use. We are seeking that variance. And what that variance, what that law talks about is that you cannot go from one room through another room in, into the bathroom. So our thought is that we are not overcrowding, as these are suite-style hotel rooms. And so we're seeking a variance for that configuration in this use. And I think that's it.
I just have a couple of things I want to supplement, I may?
Sure.
Just on the age of the house, we're not exactly sure. I'm not exactly sure when it was built. I think it was actually in the eighteen eighties, I think the early eighteen eighties, but, you know, that's just for the record. So I know there's been some questions about the, the, the drive aisle and the width and, and how that affects the, the variance. But to be clear, tonight, we're, we're seeking a variance only for the, the width of the stone wall. And the, we have, we have located an old survey from nineteen sixty-eight that, that we, we sent into the board that was provided to me this week by the former homeowner that shows the, the drive aisle in nineteen sixty-eight, exactly where it is now, just along, you know, in the, and, you know, it is a, we have a, we have a, what's called a private facia case. There's twenty-one feet. There's, you know, there's, there's more than twelve feet available. The, Dave, where's that?
There was email to us.
Do you have a copy of it here? I mean, I put this all a little bit of a period. My, sure. So-
Was that the one that was sent from Lynn Kaplan?
Yes. Yes. Is it attached to her?
Yes.
It was attached to her email, we'll name it just today.
Maybe I'll sign, have it printed out.
Oh, yeah, I did see this. I have terrible printout.
I think that's what there is, yeah. So-
Yeah.
The, you know, the, the law, which I think is pretty well-settled, is that when you have a, you know, we, we have an easement, and we have, we have an area that has been used as an easement that is clearly wide enough for the drive aisle. The, the neighbor has, has raised an issue about whether our actual right-of-way is, is wide enough. And I think one thing we agree on is that that's, that's an issue to be decided by the, by the courts, not, not this board. There's nothing, the board, you know, planning board is just an appellate body to, you know, and also to grant use variances, area variances. But the, the one thing that's also clear is that when you have these disputes, they don't have anything to do with this process. And if, if, you know, the neighbor wants to do whatever they're gonna do to, to argue about whether how wide it is or whether it's right or not, it, it, it doesn't stop this process, and it, and it can't. It's, it's, Court of Appeals has, has come down that way many times, as, as at the lower courts. And so, you know, we, we just, we just do, do want the board not, not to act, we're not, we're not asking you to act on anything pertaining to the drive aisle, but it is an existing drive aisle. You know, the planning board can look at that, and they can, they can make their own determination about that, but, that, and then, sorry. So just, I did, I did, you know, the, the addendum to the variance application talks about, you know, the, the different standards for the variance, and, you know, one of the primates being the character, character of the neighborhood and the impact on neighbors. And, and this is a, you know, preserving, preserving a historic house and, you know, respecting its integrity both inside and outside, and, and, you know, maintaining the, you know, the, the setting and hopefully opening up the, the, the house to, to be visible from other areas of the community where the fence previously wouldn't, wouldn't allow that. And, you know, right now, there's, you know, there's multifamily houses on, you know, bordering it. There's Memorial Avenue bordering it. There's the Verizon, the Verizon bordering it, and then there's the CBS. So we don't see that there's gonna be any negative on the, you know, what it, what it, you know, it's, you know, actually preserving something that's, that we think is good and will hopefully enhance the neighborhood, bring it, bring it additional, you know, economic development into the village, people coming in and the like. And, you know, in terms of the substantial, the, whether there's another alternative, the second criteria is whether there's another alternative that we could pursue, this is what we have. This is, this, this right-of-way has been in place since eighteen eighty-two. It's been, it's been used without being questioned. There's never been, and I did, I think some of the prior owners that may have submitted some emails that attest to what I'm, what I'm saying, that, that, that driveway as, as it now exists has been used without obstruction, without question for, for that, for as long as back to the nineteen twenty-two when their, when the, when that family first came to own the property. So the, that's, that's where, that's where the access is. And it's, it's in a, you know, so that's that criteria. And the, you know, preserving the, you know, we're not, we're not increasing the intensity of the rooms. The rooms are gonna stay configured the way they are, and so whatever number of people, number of beds, I mean, it could, you know, seem. Now, now, it, it has been a two-family house over the years. I'm not exactly sure when that, whether that ended or when that ended, but it, it, you know, so it's not, it's, it's not that other things couldn't be done. There could, you know, it could be, it could be expanded into a much larger house. And, you know, again, we're, we're not, we're not changing the parking area, so it looks to us like it's kind of configured the way that was anticipated with five or six cars.
And Dave, it's my understanding that you also have obtained some spaces behind the CBS, which are presently used for the station house, but would also be available for this property as well for additional parking?
Yes.
And you're planning on having access over that fence area that is not-
Yeah.
We've leasing that for the last two and a half years, and we, we renewed the lease recently for another two years. And so, but, you know.
Is that, is that an exclusive?
Yes.
Right, like you've got definitive spaces that are yours there?
Oh, that whole, that whole upper area we lease. And then we, you know, we haven't needed the whole thing, so we have sub, we have sub-tenants on a month-to-month basis.
But it's not just, you can park here, you've actually got spaces.
I have a written lease.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And I see that there are signs that you'd be towed if you were not actually parking there with permission.
Yeah, we had some problems. You know, people were, you know, were, you know, taking advantage. The tenants weren't able to, you know, some of the guests and the tenants were getting crowded out, so, yeah. And so that's kind of the environmental conditions and the, you know, the, the substantiality of the variance. You know, that's a balancing test, the totality of the circumstances. And given what we're looking for is, we think something interior that isn't gonna have, you know, a significant impact on, on kind of density and the like, and the, the variance on the, on the width of the, of the wall. We also think it's not substantial because it's, it's what's there now. And it's, you know, next door, it's a multifamily. I think it's six apartments, five apartments, I'm not sure exactly, but, and, you know, people come in. The thing is, with, with the inn, from April to November, people can park on the street, and they do. And they can park overnight. And we're, so we're kind of a symbiotic use with the, with the restaurants and the like, because people come in, they generally come in, they, they come in, you know, and they can stay, like, say from four to, to, I think it's seven when the, when the parking starts to be enforced, and it's three-hour parking. So they're, you know, our checkout is eleven, so they would have to get out by, by ten. So, and like you said, there's the CBS lot, so, you know, and, and we also, you know, our occupancy is, is concentrated. We have, we run it about, on an, on an average basis for a year, slightly under fifty percent. And the heavy, probably on the weekends, it's more like eighty percent, and during the week, it's probably more like thirty. So, and parking on the weekends in the village is free. So, you know, we're, we're, we're not, people aren't gonna change their habits, we don't think. You know, they're gonna have, the people who are, who are checking into this hotel will have, will have that option to use it. But, you know, during the week, you're gonna, you know, if you have thirty percent occupancy, it, you know, it's, it's not gonna be as intense as, you know, I wish we were full all the time, but, you know, we've been running for five years, and it's, you know, most of the traffic is coming in on the weekends, so. Just give me one second, I just wanna make sure I didn't miss anything that I wanted to mention. Okay, I think that's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Dave. I've got some information here from our legal counsel, as well as Karen Agudel. And Joe, I wanted to ask you a question because I think that this, this advice was given perhaps before this latest survey came in, and you had told us that it appeared that we may not have all the information and that one of the applications might be incomplete. Does this change that? Does it not change that?
It, it adds to the record that's, that's been submitted. I think that, just to provide some context for the public and for the board, I think Karen and I, after reviewing the application, we're of, and Karen, please speak for yourself when I'm done, I'm speaking for you. We're of the opinion that we, at the very least, needed more information about the easement in order to consider the application complete. And I want to be clear that that was not, Mr. Daniels has correctly stated that, and I have, and I have advised as such, there's certainly an easement. An easement exists. It's not defined by meets and bounds. Its age does not prohibit it from being used and useful. And there are many arguments in the law about establishing easements and, and the, the location of easements by use. That is also correct. It is also correct that generally speaking, boards do not render judicial opinions on, on private easement disputes. But the application before the planning board and the ZBA is slightly different with respect to that. The planning board can potentially look at a prime facia easement and, from a planning perspective, review it, and if there are private disputes, then the applicant and the neighbors who assert those claims will have to fight that out. The ZBA, though, is being asked to determine a variance which requires it to weigh, as Dave correctly stated, the substantiality of the variance. And we felt, and I think still feel, that some more information was needed to determine what, what is the extent of the variance being slot on the-
How many feet, how many inches?
Right, on the ground, it's true, and I appreciate the statement. On the most basic level, the narrowest they get is nine feet. And so on one level, you could say they need a variance that gets them down to nine feet. You have to determine that that's okay for this access here. But, but the balancing test would, would, would typically involve determining, let's say if it's twelve feet wide, for instance, then a three-foot variance is a twenty-five percent variance. Just as an example, right, something along those lines. So the, these are things that we think the board should have. These, several of these documents do add some facts. I would not be comfortable, I've looked at them. It does seem on their face that, for the most part, they do a really good job establishing the history of usage there. Whether or not they get to the, to the question of the- Whether or not they get to the, to the question of the, the width, I, I'm, to be perfectly honest, I'm sure, you know, we'd like an opportunity to look at that further, so no matter what happens tonight, I think we should all take a closer look at that because this stuff came in, in the last few days. But, but our, heading into this, our sense was that the application on the first variance, which I call it the first variance, you know, arbitrarily, which is this easement area or this access area, was incomplete. The application for the second variance, which is with respect to the housing code, I, I think certainly is entirely on the table. I think you have all the facts you need to go forward on that. But that's, I'd certainly like to take another look at this, and I, and I do still have concerns. Karen, again, I don't want to speak for you, but please explain.
Yeah, I mean, Joe and I both looked at this independently and came to the same place when we spoke. And I, you know, yes, there's additional information, it's, it's difficult to read anything on the survey in the condition in which we received it, but yeah, I stand with Joe on that.
And we're not drawing any conclusions about where this gets, but I think, and this information will certainly be useful. I know that the neighbor is here with representation and should be heard on the point as well. But I think there's work to be done here, I guess is what I'm saying on that. And it may be useful to, whether, to just, to also narrow on the second variance, which is a fairly straightforward variance, which has one section of the law that talks about the standards that apply. You know, perhaps that would be a useful endeavor as well. I do also want to just say on the record, I've met at length with the building inspector. There are a number of other, of other concerns that have been raised by one of the neighbors, so again, I think is here tonight. We are entirely confident that the building department, you know, has acted appropriately to date on, on these items. That is something I'm sure that both Mr. Daniels and, and, and the neighbor will want to know more about and, and will get there. But I, I did meet with them on all of those issues, and I'm comfortable that we're, we're on good footing as far as where we are right now, procedurally, with the property.
Do you still think that we should hold off on opening the public hearing based on variance one about the easement?
I do, I do.
Okay. I mean, I know that their counsel is here, they might want to add some of their views now, and we keep it open, or what was your, what's your recommendation?
I mean, we should, we should hear what people have to say, but I, my counsel is that it's, it's not a complete application.
Right.
And this, and again, I'm not trying to be difficult, this, this may change things. By the time we meet again, this may change things, I don't know. And there may be more information that can be gathered, but that would be my advice. I would certainly, for, for what it's worth, I would, I, I would hear from my counsel.
Yeah, I, I think I would feel that they're here, they're being paid to be here today.
Yeah, whether it's a public hearing or not.
They obviously have some opinions. And whether or not we open it up fully to the public, I think we, we should at least open up the floor to the legal counsel for the neighbor to hear their views and their concerns based on what we reheard.
I, I join in that opinion that the application's incomplete. And although I have arguments to make with respect to the merits of the proposed access variance, I don't want to talk about that tonight because I think the fundamental first question is, what's the dimension of what's there? So we do know the easement talks about, the property has, shares boundary fifteen and nineteen, and there's a stone wall, and there's a gap between the stone wall. And the easement that is, the variance that is sought today is for two feet, one inches. And I, I think it's been kind of the story of this, in this application, I've only been involved in this for like the last ten days, so, but I went out Sunday, Saturday, actually, because you can't do this work without walking the land. So I went out and I walked the land because I wanted to see what this was all about. And you had a predicate question right at the beginning. The, there is, there is, there are multiple statements on this record that say that the owner of fifteen, Memorial Avenue, owns a rate of an access easement that is no less than twelve foot wide between the gap between the two stone walls and Smith Street. That's what's said over and over. Now, I gave, I'm going to hand out to you to make sure we have this all on the record. I've written three letters to you, or one today covering it, an expert's report.
Do we know when the stone wall was constructed?
I don't know, I've been at this for about fifteen days, but I have an idea I want to share.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm just curious because that language may have been written before the wall was put up.
It's, it's a very important question because this language was written in eighteen eighty-two. And it does not, well, I'll get to that in a second, but if you have, I don't know if you have all these letters, but I, I put them together and, and so that we can put them on the record. One of the letters is missing. And I want to give the-
Oh, no, I missed one there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you. So I went out to see what it looked like. And, you know, I'm a lawyer, but I can do a tape measure, it's not entirely impossible. I can actually use my, I can't use my phone to bank or send photos, but tape measure I can figure out. So I went there because I knew it was a six-family house, and I knew that there were parking areas, designated parking areas in that, in that parking-
That nineteen memorial?
Yeah.
The one next to the-
Yeah. And I, I knew that my client, when I first met with my clients, they were in, in the audience today, Mr. Sierra and Mr. Sierra, they were concerned about, there was a single family dwelling use, that there was, that had one or two cars involved in it, and that was not an issue for their parking. But their primary concern is, what is this traffic going to do to my tenants' parking, which is all designated parking? So I wanted to come and take a look at it, so I did. And I went, I drove, I came up, and the parking area, if you've not been in it, it's, it's designated. There's a parking, park here, park here, park here. There's three designated spots that are parallel with the easement area or the alleged easement area. And then there's a kind of a square off, as you're, as you're coming in, there's a square off where three other cars park. These, these three cars don't affect really the width of, of the access, but this part of law parking certainly does. I, I measured from one of those, there was only one truck there, I measured from the bottom of the wheel to the edge of the sidewalk, and it was nine feet, five inches, nine foot, six inches. So if there was a twelve-foot easement that in some effect benefited access, there was two feet of it underneath this truck someplace, which was parked where a designated parking sign is. And so what I did was, I, I wanted to, I measured that, and then I went and looked at the gap. Now, the gap is here, and there, as you can see, this is like a bumper, a little yellow thing. So that's right at the bottom, that goes base to base at the bottom. And I measured that. And this, the bottom of this gap is six inches more narrow than the top. The dimension that you had before you as an area variance or a request for an area variance is the dimension at the top.
Right.
Not at the bottom. The bottom is more, is more significant. It's six inches smaller than on the top. So you have two issues for an incompletion, and one of which is that the requested easement is measured off the top, not off the bottom. And it would seem to me that it should be measured off the bottom because that's where the wheelbase is going to go. The most narrow of the gap is where the problem is going to be, that would be your maximum easement. The second problem we have is, what is the size of the easement? If we don't know how wide the entire access easement is, we don't really know how dramatic the easement is in that gap. That's how that affects that. There's no application here today to say, we need a, an area variance of two feet along the, from the twelve-foot wide requirement, because we don't know, we don't know if it exists. The reason why we don't know it exists is found right in the application submitted to you by the applicant. And if you will look at the survey, I'll point something out to you with the survey I just got handed to, if you can open up the link to the survey, which is in the letter that I sent, and it is- No, okay. Yeah, I'll give it to you, it's, it's exhibit, exhibit D is the easement. It's written in eighteen eighty-two script, they didn't have typewriters. Exhibit E is the handwritten, I'm sorry, exhibit E, one of my secretaries knows how to unscript and script them. And I compared this to a document that I think Mr. Daniels prepared, and they're identical. And in the, this is the document that is cited as easement, and it says that this easement, the only description of it that I can find in there, says, "A right-of-way in and over above described lands and premises of the first party, nineteen Memorial Avenue, about a hundred and twenty feet from the west side of the same to be located by said first parties and the said party of the second party." That's it. Doesn't say what happens after you get to that point, and it doesn't say that the point was located, it just says what it says. Now, if you look at- Exhibit- C. Exhibit C is the application that's pending before you. And in that application, there is a survey. And if you look at that survey- It is prepared by- The survey's the very last page of the application. And it's prepared by a surveyor whose name I know, Terry Bernadore Collins. And if you look at the survey on the lower left-hand corner, on the lower left-hand corner, there's what they call surveyor comments. So a surveyor who draws things will also, also add language on the survey to explain what he's drawn. This survey says, in his comments, it's very small print, I'll refer back to my letter, it's very small but very clear print. And Mr. Collins says, "The location of the right-of-way to and from Smith Street, as described in Libra two oh nine, page four, six, three, is not mathematical and not plottable. Physical evidence of the existing asphalt driveway is plotted herein." What the surveyor is saying to you is that he can't draw the survey, he can't draw a easement to show us the dimension of the area covered by the easement based on the language in the document upon which this application relies. So it means that in terms of the information you need to make your decisions, there's a big hole. That twelve inches is missing. But I just got two surveys were handed to me, and I, I don't know, I can't read this. Does anyone have one better than that?
No, that's as good as I might as do, the ones we're all looking at. The ones from the nineteen sixties that was submitted by a previous resident.
Okay, well, it's fine, I couldn't read it, so I can't say what it means or what it says. If anybody has a copy that we've read, I'd really like to see it. But I also was handed a second survey just now by Mr. Daniels. It, it is the same survey that we're just looking at, at the last exhibit of exhibit C, except there's a big difference on it. Big difference is that comment number two is entirely missing. Comment I just wrote to you is not on this survey. I have no idea why, it was just handed to me. I just want to, if there is any confusion, if there is a change in heart from Mr. Collins that resulted in his taking that note off the survey, we need to know that. But I don't know, he's not here. So I think that, that kind of colors my problem, I mean, my predicate problem. I don't want to talk about the merits, we, I have opinions about that. Your, your job as an adjudicatory body is, well, is, is to let the steam off of the conflict between the zoning code, and it's, you've heard this from a million other lawyers, you don't hear it from me, but without knowing how wide that easement is, you can't really get, you can't really measure how much of a variance is needed. And without knowing how much variance is needed, you can't say how substantial it is. If you can't say how substantial it is, you can't grant it. So I don't want to say that there can't be proof coming in, but I do want to say one last thing on this, that proof coming in, that that will support a finding of twelve feet, but the question is focused now. You have to have it. We don't have it. And I, I, I think because you don't have it, you have an incomplete application, and I think because you have an incomplete application, you can't move on it. It's not me saying you can't move on it. We do know that ultimately, unless there's some kind of evidence that can come before this board that will demonstrate the dimension, location, and area of that easement, it will be a question that has to be determined by the courts. Both sides agree. But my only point is, I think that until you have those dimensions, you don't have an application upon which you can act. And you can't, I appreciate you letting me speak tonight, but to the public hearing, what are we going to talk about? We don't know what that means. We don't know what that means, I can't talk about, we can't. I have, I've given you a report from our traffic expert that assumes it's a twelve-foot easement. And, and it's given you a flavor of what the, what the arguments would be if it was demonstrated that there was a twelve-foot easement. But until it's there, all of that is speculation. It's not, it's not a real thing. And so the application's incomplete. And I do want to talk about one last thing. I think that there is a body of law that says that an easement doesn't need a description to exist. So there very well could be an easement there, even though the description is non-existent. But the task before your board is to determine what the impact is, which you can't do without the description. That seems to me to be the, the difference. But I still don't know enough about this, and I'm trying to find out more about it. So I will, just want to leave you with two or three things. One is this, I assume nineteen memorial, beautiful building. I, I, when I was a kid, I used to come here to go to church, so I, I know these buildings. And that's gorgeous. I assumed it was a one-family house at some point, and now I know it's a six-family house. So I don't know if that's a product of a site plan application that was approved. We, well, try to get our hands on that file if it exists, because if it exists, the issues we're discussing may, may have been resolved or addressed in, in that, in that process. There may be some conversation about where these parking, designated parking areas came from, where they're set by the planning board, where they're set by use. So we're trying to get that information, we, we, you know, we, we put our FOIL requests in, and I know we'll get it. And, and there might be some answers in there that might help us all in this process. But there's one last thing, and I've only been at this for about ten, twelve days. I, I think that there is a plausible argument that what was ever done in eighteen eighty-two, based on the physical characteristics of the property as it presently exists, was either abandoned- was either abandoned or destroyed. And if it was abandoned, and I can demonstrate that as a matter of law, then the easement, even if it did exist, no longer has any power. And if it was destroyed, meaning that the land was so reconfigured that it could no longer be used for its original purpose, the statute of limitations would have a long time ago run to allow one homeowner to assert his right of an easement over the other.
I do...
I don't know that, I don't know that, I'm just looking at it, and I just didn't want to leave the room without leaving it as a possibility.
Understood, but I do want to say for the board's benefit, for the public, I think you are now getting into that territory where that's for, for the courts to decide if that's where it's going to end up, because it's not something this, this board needs to, we need facts.
So I will put one on ahead, we need facts, I agree.
And, and, and we make no predetermined judgment on whether we've got them. But I do think some of this stuff came in three days ago, or today, right? And, and so I do think it makes sense to...
We just, we do need facts, and I'm going to stop here because they promised I wouldn't get into anything else other than that question. But you can see what little investigation I've done in the last twelve days has raised, I think, significant questions with respect to the absence of those facts.
Right.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to be heard tonight.
I have one question for you. Are you, you are which lawyer from this firm?
Stenger.
So you are Kenneth Stenger?
Yes.
Great, I'm sorry, you didn't identify yourself when you stepped up? I thought that might have been the case, but for the record, I just wanted to make...
While it may be self-evident, I actually don't even think you officially said who you represent.
I'm sorry, it's in the letter.
I, I know it's in the letter, but I just, since we are all here...
Mr. and Mrs., Mr. and the brother Sarah, minus one, our DAC, Pauline Enterprises LLC. Their father owned that, that, that property as a six-family dwelling, yes. Twenty, twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago. It passed down to the brothers, and the brothers now own it in the form of that LLC.
Got it.
And so we have standing, and that's why we're here.
Thank you very much, Kenneth.
Well...
Again, we weren't opening up this as a public hearing, but I want to, at least here, cancel.
Can I have an opportunity to respond to those comments?
I think that would be fair, Dave, sure.
Okay. So I think there's a, there's a fundamental difference of opinion as to the nature of, of the access and the access way which is defined. There's no, there's no question where the driveway has existed for decades. It's, and there's no question that it is twenty, it's shown on the survey, twenty-one feet. There's, there's twelve feet, you know, that, that you take that parking into account, and the Village, the Village parking spaces are nine by nineteen. Nine feet is, you know, is plenty of space. I drive in there all the time. There's, there's more than twelve feet. I mean, there's plenty of space when they park, and they're not parking right against the wall either, they're, they're, so... But it, it, it's akin, what, what Mr. Stenger is saying is akin to saying, if I own a piece of property, and an easement is a property interest, it's, it's a right, but it's a right of passage. And, but, but to say that, well, I own a piece of property, but someone else comes into a public hearing and says, "No, you don't, I own it," or "You don't have a right to that," or "You abandoned it," or whatever those arguments are going to be, then you guys are going to be stymied to make any kind of a decision, because anybody can do what he's doing. And he is making arguments that really should be made before a court. The, the issue as to whether, whether it's, it's somehow restricted, which it never has been, but if it's somehow restricted, he's got the, he's got to go to court, and he's got to prove that. It's not, it's not the burden on the landowner who's been using this easement. The driveway's laid out, and it's, and it's, it is what it is. And that's, so it's not the, the right-of-way, or how big the rights, it, it, it's the reverse of that. We have an easement, we've been using the easement, we're asserting the right. And to, to take that right away, that's not your job. And, and what he's asking you to do is, he's, he's, he's going down that road because that is what he wants you to do. He's, and he's, he's muddying the waters with, with abandonment and things like that, which is, you know, so far afield of, of any reality of what has happened. But even if, even if it was, even if there was some legitimacy to it, it's not something you guys should even be hearing, so...
Can I ask a question?
Thank you, Dave. Yes, please.
Is there, what is the drive aisle width requirement for a six-unit apartment house?
I mean, I, I don't have the zoning by memory, but it's, yeah, I assume it's twelve feet.
It's twenty, something for most of...
So if they have, if they, if they, and I, I'm measuring off of the survey, because I have it as a CAD file, and we know we have twenty-one feet. So if they have, and I believe the parking space requirement for the parallel is nine feet by nineteen, correct? So if they have these two things, and I have nine feet here, they have to have a twelve-foot drive aisle here. So I'm, I'm just, be curious to see...
And that's the other thing, I had meant to make that, that point, that to, to narrow it below that would interfere with their own access.
Yes.
I mean, they've got all these cars parked there, and so I, I, you know, so...
Our, our, sorry. What I notice is that we make decisions here based on property lines, corners of properties, houses, setbacks. And for us to grant a variance, we need a definite point to measure from. Now, I don't know what part of the wall that we need to take off. Do you want the right five inches, the left five inches for to maintain the twelve feet?
We're not, we're not asking, we're not asking for a variance on the access lane. We, we don't believe we need that. And if Mr. Stenger disagrees, you know...
But how do we choose what part of the wall to take, because that's on the...
Go ahead, Dave.
No, but we're, but what, the wall is, whatever, whatever the width of the wall is, and that can be measured, and, you know, if it's, if it's more, then we may have to, we may have to... If it's less than nine feet eight, we have a surveyor telling us that, we just, I just took it from them. And so, but all we're, that is the issue here, is that, the width of that wall, and how the, the, the access drive is huge. It's like, and he's making this claim, well, you really only have, somehow, even though that's been opened up for, for Fifteen Memorial to come in and out of for decades with horses, teams, vehicles of all kinds, trucks, you know...
But what he does on his property, is that relevant to your twelve-foot easement? Are you allowed, like, that's, you have...
It's not, it's not, it's an...
It's an easement to your property that if you give you an inch, you're going to take them, like, oh, all right.
All right. Yeah. There's a stone wall on Nineteenth Memorial...
Yeah, I understand.
Which restricts the access to Fifteen Memorial. Fifteen Memorial being Dave Daniels' property, is here tonight for these variances.
Mr. Shana, can I just clarify?
The pinch point was created by that stone wall construction, we don't know when that happened.
It was twelve years ago, it was, it was around, around twelve years ago it was done.
But because things are not plottable, and we have some issues with some of the specifics, we don't know exactly what the variance numbers would be. I, I tend to be in agreement here that this is still a gray area, Joe, and Karen, I'd like your opinions too. I think that perhaps for this particular variance, we, we need to wait for the ability for more facts to come in, or specifics, and maybe even a court determination, if that's possible.
Well, I don't want to go there necessarily, because it is correct that that's a private dispute.
Right.
We, what I think Karen and I were looking for, and we got something, right? Like, there's more now on the record, right? It's just, as I said, just facts, what supports this, what they've come in with. I, I, I think, given what we've heard tonight, given what's on the record now, at the very least, the time is required to digest this information, to see whether it, it, it changes our view of the application, so that you, so that you can move on it.
I mean, it seems obvious to me that based on some of the historic stuff from eighteen eighty-two, and the geography of these buildings, the slopes, the walls, and the construction, that that has been the only access point for a very long time, for Fifteen Memorial. That, I think, seems pretty obvious, but obviously there is some specifics that you need to get nailed down for satisfaction of these...
Right, and, and again, on the most basic level, and I think the applicant has said this, and I think I've said it, the code requires a twelve-foot access width, right? On the most basic level, you, you know that there's something like nine feet at that pinch point.
Right.
So I'm not saying you have no information to go on.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I, I think we're just, and we're not trying to be the New York State Supreme Court either. Somewhere in between there is, is the need for enough information to be comfortable calling the application complete. I don't think, frankly, speaking for either the neighbor or the applicant, it does anybody any favors to, to blow past that without taking a careful look at what we've got. And we do have new information, and that's good, and I think we should take some time to look at it and think about all these things.
I just want to add that this, this survey, Dave, that you handed Mr. Stenger here, we don't have this on file. So you should submit it, and I would recommend that you have your surveyor explain why the note was left. I do see there's a revision date, I do see that they attempted to plot out the easement per Libra two, two oh nine CP four sixty-three, which talks about the hundred and twenty feet west of Memorial Avenue. So I think it would be useful if your surveyor explained why that wasn't on the first survey, and...
Just to be clear, though, Karen, she's not purporting to plot that, nobody's arguing that the, that the easement is...
Is suddenly plottable.
It's not, that isn't the, but there is a, there is, and something I think got missed. There is a hundred, this hundred and twenty that Mr. Stenger's been talking about, actually, and you can see it on the survey, there is, if you measure a hundred and twenty feet along Smith Street, you come to a point that's pretty, almost at the end of the property on the, on the, on that side, and it kind of cuts across like a triangle across the driveway. So I, the only conclusion I can, you know, they, they wanted to have the easement on the edge of the property so it wouldn't run right through it. And, and that's clearly what, and it said, it says about.
It does say about.
So there was some discretion. If, if, if you were literally taking that line, you'd be running right through where they parked their cars, you know? And so all, so it's, and again, I, I, yeah.
I, I think, Dave, on it, the, the, I think the wisdom of that suggestion is, on its face, if in any other, in any application, you, you got a survey that said, this is not plottable, you'd at least have some pause, you'd say, okay, well, then what are we looking at? It's not on there now. There's probably a reason for that. And the reasons, I suspect, are good, and, and, or at least your surveyor thought so. And so that would be useful, we don't have that survey.
A statement from your surveyor explaining that for those of us that don't know any better.
There must be some justification, I presume, for why it's become more clear to them.
Yes.
And that, and that's sort of, I think, what we're, what we're after as well.
Yes.
Mr. Stenger, I was going to say, you've been patiently bringing your hand up and lowering it while we're all talking.
I just want to clarify, just really, one thing. I, I... Sometimes a lawyer does not want to stop. By introducing a talk about abandonment, that's another issue in a courtroom, not here. The only burden on this applicant that I say to be met, and I'm asking to be met, is that this applicant say to this board, what is, where does this easement lie, how, why is it? And you need that information in order to be able to determine what variance to grant. And that's it. The rest of this is of interest to me, and may be of interest to me in another forum, but not here. I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on that. Thank you. Really, I appreciate you giving me that opportunity.
No, no, I think it was important to hear some of the opinions of, of the legal side of this on, on, on both sides for both properties. They're obviously both here, things were just presented, things are fresh. We can open up the public hearing on this at a later time, but I'm going to take Joe and Karen's advice here. I think that we should not open the public hearing on this, that we, we do need to wait for, for more facts to arrive to, to analyze some of the stuff that's just come in before we, we, we make any moves on variance number one about the easement. So I think we need to table that for now, and we'll have to revisit that at another day.
Okay.
Can I make one other suggestion towards the plans? There's a lot of information that is left out. I know Mr. Daniels brought up that he's leasing parking. And there's no footprint of the property, adjacent property, to help look at. So if we could kind of block off and put, put the...
That's not part of the application, that, that part of that was, you know, Mr. Worley...
Well, it's how does that easement, and what we decide, affect, you know? That's part of the project and developing and moving forward.
No, it isn't. Are you talking about the parking, the CBS parking lot?
Yeah, I want to see what options...
No, it's not part of, that isn't part of this, but we're not, we're not using that parking for this project. It's there, that was the question that was asked. But we, we specifically...
You said that you have it for home and lawn parking if you need it.
But it's not part of our project, and we have, and we made that very clear in our application, that we...
I would like to see the footprint of that neighboring building question on the map.
Building.
The property owner...
Nineteenth Memorial, you'd like to see on the...
Nineteenth Memorial, I'd like to see the property on the map for a reference and scale and massing. That's all. I just want to look at it, where the existing driveway is, the edge of the house, how congested it is, from a two-D perspective. Yes, looking at it in the field is sufficient, but I don't have that in front of me right now. Thank you.
We can talk now about our second variance. A variance which has to do with section fifty-three of the code. I've been advised that we can't open that tonight. And that has to do with language specifically to local law two. I'll actually read this out loud so everybody's familiar with it. "No dwelling or dwelling unit containing two or more sleeping rooms shall have such room arrangements that access to a bathroom or water closet compartment intended for use by occupants of more than one sleeping room can be had by going through another sleeping room."
Right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll see you again soon. This applicant is seeking a variance to allow for access to the bathroom through another sleeping room for three of the rooms, which will not meet this requirement. This is something that we all feel that we have all the information for tonight to move forward on, although...
No, you cannot move forward on it in terms of a decision, because we would need to make a secret determination first.
I'm just going to ask you about that.
But you could open the public hearing on it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I wasn't, move forward can mean so many things.
And I would do that.
Is this considered a type two action?
Yeah, I mean, I, for some reason, I thought it was...
I don't think we're...
Karen, I thought it was a type two action. I thought it was, I thought your letter, previous letter said it was a type two action, no?
So for the planning board, it was a type two action, but it's not a coordinated review between the two boards. They have to make their own secret determination, and, and I just don't think we're prepared, given the circumstances, to make that decision tonight.
I thought I'd seen something in the letter, maybe, maybe I'm mistaken, that to the, for this report to the board, it said type two, but...
So have they established themselves as lead agency in this, and they have to make the determination?
Because it's a type two, there is no lead agency, it's not, their, their secret review ends there. Which is nice in one respect, but, but as Karen says, because of that, this is, that determination is de novo to you. Like, you have an application on which you need to make a secret determination to. So, no, there's not a coordinated review on this.
So they've made a secret determination, and we also need to make a secret determination.
No, no, they did not. They, they made, it was a type two action, so secret doesn't apply.
No, no. It, it's a...
They did.
Type two is a seeker class. So they've done seeker by virtue of classifying it as a type two action. Type two actions are those type of actions do not have significant adverse impacts.
So we need to do the same thing tonight?
No, we at some point need to make a secret determination.
Before you make a decision, you have to make that.
Whether it be type two, unlisted, and an EGDEC, but we're not there yet. We have a variance that we're not moving forward with presently, and another variance, and the two are related. And I don't think it's appropriate to making, to classify the seeker class when we have uncertainty in front of us.
Okay. So would you recommend, then, that we don't move forward on any of this then, this evening? Because we're pending more information on variance number one? Is that what you're saying, or am I...
I, I mean, I think if you want to open the public hearing, that's perfectly suitable. I think discussion over, over, you know, what you think about the variance wing... I think discussion over, over, you know, what you think about the variance weighing of the different criteria is appropriate, but.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's a somewhat obscure provision. It's not a typical zoning variance. And so I, I think some discussion of it makes some sense. It will, because I think it will allow you, and the applicant frankly, to, to get where you need to go the, the next time we see each other, right? And, and, so again, this, this is not strictly speaking an area variance or a use variance. It's not a bulker area provision. It's not a use variance. They're not asking, it's not relevant to how the property gets used. It's a specific section in the code under housing
Right.
that allows the ZBA to, to give a variance from this section, as long as you find that the, that giving that variance will not, um, be contrary to the purposes of that housing law. And I think I gave you guys earlier of, of the, the section of, there's an intent section in that law. And, and I think it was correctly stated, is it was largely aimed at preventing overcrowding and unsanitary conditions by having multiple parties, you know, use one bathroom and et cetera. And, and so, you know, issues like public health and safety, sanitation, those things are part of the intent of the law. If you find under these circumstances that, um, that the, uh, that the variance will not be, granting the variance would not be contrary to those things, then you can grant it. If you do, you should talk about that, ask questions about that, um, and, and, and that could affect your decision as well. So I think that's, if you've got questions tonight, it's worth asking. I think opening the public hearing on that does no harm. You would hold it open.
Yeah.
And then we would proceed.
Would someone like to make a motion to open up the public hearing to discuss variance number two, about walking through, um, bedroom areas to get to a bathroom?
I'll open up a motion to, I'm sorry, I'm tired here tonight for this.
It's okay, and it was a long-winded intro for me. Can I have a second?
Certainly.
All right. The public hearing is now open. Do we have any questions or comments from anybody attending tonight regarding variance number two?
And I don't believe you received any comments on this aspect of the application, right, in writing?
Not on this aspect of the application, no.
All right, I would just, if I could, does anybody in the public have anything? Um, you, you know, they're, and again, I, if you, whatever you decide to do in terms of holding it open, or, or what, I'm, I'm, I'm okay either way, but, um, they aren't, they aren't connected in the sense that, you know, if, if, for whatever reason, the variance wasn't granted, we're, you know, we're gonna find a solution. So what that is, I, you know, don't know yet, but, um, so this is something that, you know, would be good to get a sense of the board, and, and it's, it's an interior, you, you know, I mean, it's, it's, the impact is gonna be positive. I mean, this, this house is getting preserved, it's a historic house, it's getting preserved. We're, we're, it's about the least amount of density that you could expect. I mean, if, if somebody, you know, we've got, we've got, um, you know, it's a, it's a very large house, and we are, we're, you know, these are gonna be ginormous suites for people, you know, to, because we want it to be that way.
It may be worthwhile, too. I know you touched on this briefly in your pres, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Mary.
Mary. In your presentation, I think you elaborated a little more on it from the planning board. But for the ZBA, it may be useful to just clarify that, that this is a suite that I think is intend, will likely be rented to people who have rented it on purpose, right? To get, in other words, this is not like two families. I mean, it shouldn't be me saying, do you wanna say that, just to talk about that, sorry? But I, but I think it's what I understand from the, from the record.
Right. So there's, there's one entry into each of the suites. So you would come in, and there will be, you know, a bed that can have two occupants in here. And then there'll be another room here that can have two occupants, okay? Obviously, smaller room, larger room. This will only have two occupants, that, that the variance does imply. And then on the second floor, the same thing. This will have one entrance into these two rooms. Two occupants can be housed here to here. They will walk through this way to get to this bathroom. Same thing here. One entrance, two rooms, two occupants, one occupant, because of the square footage of the room. And then you will walk through to get to the bathroom. But the idea is that.
This is not two families huddled together.
Yes, no, you're renting it to one entity, whether they have, you know, two parents, two kids, whatever. It, it's, that's what it can house by the square footage that's there. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Mary. So we're gonna keep the public hearing open, then. We won't be closing it, so that we continue to comment in our next meeting. Um, I took a walkthrough on the property, just, I wanna make a comment. It's a neat old house, lots of potential. I can understand why Mr. Daniels wants to do the project in this manner. From my perspective, it appears that he will preserve a lot of the architectural integrity of the original home, keeping the original walls in place, keeping the moldings, not destroying a lot of the floor plan and changing it around. I can totally understand why he's wanting to do this. It seems to make sense to me as well. And my initial view is that it will seem to have very minimal impact in some of the areas of concern about sanitation and such that Joe has mentioned, that from one of the local laws. Any other board members have any comments?
No, I, I like the architectural stuff. I think that's gonna be a good fit. I don't have any qualms with layout and, uh, usage at the moment. Um, I think it'll be a good fit. That does not concern me.
Great. If you guys get a chance, um, I, you might wanna reach out to Dave also. I know you weren't able to attend, uh, the viewing on Saturday, but it might be helpful to walk through the place, just to kinda see the whys and.
I'm sorry I missed that. I came, I came and I couldn't find.
I thought I saw you, actually.
Yes, that was where you drive by.
I thought I said, I think that's Anne. No, that was, yeah. So any, actually, it's, it, it, just, we can give you a code. I mean, there's a, you know, if you want somebody to be with you, that's fine. But I, you know, we can, if you're just strolling by and wanna go in, it's, uh, you know, I'll give you the code.
Okay, good, thank you.
Um, I just recommend maybe to just demystify what this is a variance for a little bit more. You might just wanna read into the record, um, the parts of the purpose that you'd be weighing this variance against.
Uh, I gotta get to that page, cause I did the more abridged version.
Yeah, you can kind of, you don't have to read this whole thing, but, I mean.
Start from like.
Yeah, so you can kind of point out what that chapter is about.
I'll try to paraphrase on, on the fly here. This is, this is, uh, chapter fifty-three, section one. Let's see here. I'm just gonna read the whole thing.
Yeah, it, you should.
Why is it, it's hard for me to organize as I read?
Fair.
Uh, "There exists or may, in the future exist, within the village dwellings, dwelling units, boarding houses, rooming houses, apartments, or parts thereof, the overcrowding of which by reason of their structure, sanitation capabilities or use affect or are likely to affect adversely the public health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing in the village. To correct and prevent the existence of advance adverse, excuse me, overcrowding conditions here and above referred to, and to achieve and maintain such levels of residential environmental quality as will protect and promote public health, safety, and general welfare, the establishment and enforcement of minimum housing standards is required. It is hereby declared that the intent of the provisions of this chapter is to protect, preserve, and promote the physical and mental health and social well-being of the people to minimize the incidence of communicable diseases, to regulate the occupancy levels of privately and publicly owned dwellings for the purpose of maintaining adequate sanitation and public health, and to protect the safety of the people and to promote the general welfare by regulations which shall be applicable to all dwellings now in existence or hereafter constructed, and to ensure that the quality of housing is adequate for the protection of public health and safety and general welfare of persons in the village."
And if I may exhaust all of your attention spans, the reason that that is relevant is because the specific provision that allows this board to grant variances from this code section reads as follows. "The zoning board of appeals may grant a variance or waiver from any provision of this chapter," and that's this chapter fifty-three, which you just read the intent for. "In a specific case, subject to appropriate conditions, where such variance or waiver is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the provisions of this chapter," that's why we just read that, "and where there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship in carrying out a specific requirement." So that set of intentions is your baseline for determining whether you're granting the variance would be contrary to that. So that, thank you, Karen. That's a good predicate for what we're all talking about for, for this public edification.
And in the cases of these suites, as has been explained to me, uh, by Dave and then also Mary today, these are most likely going to be rented by a single entity, a family of multiple groups, generations, kids, parents, whatever, who all know each other and will very likely be fine walking through one room into another to get to a bathroom. Uh, so I think what we're gonna end up doing tonight is tabling, moving further on any of this. We'll have to hold off until our next meeting. We'll need to obviously get more information regarding the easement and evaluate further the information that we do have. Is there anything else that you think I should address before moving on to other business, Karen or Joe? Anything that we missed, or that I should have on the record?
I don't think so.
No.
No, thank you.
Okay, so why don't we then, uh, move on to the next order of business and temporarily close the public hearing, uh, for this.
Well, don't close, don't say that.
No, no, temporarily.
You're adjourning it.
We're adjourning, thank you. We're adjourning the public hearing to be continued at a later. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from our January, January twenty-fourth meeting, I don't.
January twenty-fourth.
All right. I read over those minutes just today. Vivian, you do a great job with all the details. And they look good to me. I'm sorry I didn't get back to you earlier on them. I know it was the draft. Did the other board members have a chance to read those minutes? If not, we can put off, uh, approving them until a later time.
I was satisfied.
Okay.
I didn't read them. I have no comments.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for the January twenty-fourth CBA meeting.
Second.
All in favor of appropriate minutes, say aye. All right, it has been approved. Uh, I don't believe there's any other business, although Vivian, you might have something that has come up.
No.
Nothing to sign or anything, okay? Then I guess, uh, I'd like to have a motion by someone to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
And I know you want a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, aye as well. Meeting has been adjourned. Thank you all for your time.
Are we off?
No, not yet.